It's open to meeting. Reading as a meeting's notice, please.
The Board of Directors of the School District of the City of Erie, PA will meet in special session on Wednesday, January 10th, 2018, in Conference Room 1 of the Dr. Jacy Parker Leadership Center, 148 West 21st Street, Erie, PA, at 5:00 PM to review and consider a proposal for Strategic Plan Consultant and for general business purposes. The Board of School Directors will meet as a committee as a whole on Wednesday, January 10th, 2018, at 5:30 PM, immediately following the special board meetings by request of the President's friend for foundation manager.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Fabrizi?
Here.
Mrs. Steen?
Here.
Mr. Harkin?
Here.
Mrs. McNair?
Here.
Mr. Spiegel?
Here.
Mr. Titus?
Here.
Mrs. Alexanderovic?
Excuse?
Mr. Cassillo?
Here.
Mr. Petronas?
Here.
Well, the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hearing the citizens, persons who desire to speak for five minutes must submit their request in writing to the Secretary's office at least one week prior to the meeting. All others may speak for three minutes. We have no five-minute speakers. Anybody who'd like to speak? Not seeing any, we'll move on to new business and turn it over to the Secretary of Defense.
Well, thank you for considering the Strategic Plan Consultant tonight. We did send you out the proposal, and as you can see from the timeline, it's very aggressive. We're hoping, again, to get this done by May so that these recommendations that are developed out of the strategic plan for our educational programs can be built into our 18, 19 budget and our projections moving forward and become part of our financial recovery plan as well. We're really excited to get started. We've been having some informal conversations with the group this week. They've already sent over some information that Bee and her team has started to put together on the curriculum and also sent some data, information on our student data. So if you're willing to approve this tonight, we're looking forward to getting started tomorrow.
Chair member?
Yes, go ahead. Okay.
I approve the recommendation of the administration and appoint Performance Fact, the Strategic Plan Consultant as outlined in the presentation we've heard.
So I have a motion to approve. Is there any seconds?
Second.
Okay. Tom B. Darling said we'll give it to Tom. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. Brian, I certainly agree with, you know, the philosophy that, you know, we do at Klein need onsite expertise to give us some guidance. I guess my only concern primarily is, is that, you know, we're asked tonight to vote for a $100,000 contract without the board really receiving a lot of documentation. And I mean from the aspect that, who else was interviewed? What was it that made the determination that Performance Fact is a performance fact was the final choice? And have we interviewed other districts that have already gone with them? And what were their results? How well taken was it by not only the district but the public sense? And how radical is their proposal ultimately going to be? I mean, I have no qualms in moving forward with this. My only major problem was we didn't really have a full display of information available to us to be able to make a full endorsement, you know, a wholehearted endorsement. And secondly, I am a little concerned about perception. You know, now that we've got a commitment for the $14 million, we don't want to give the perception that, oh, baby, you know, we're in hog heaven and Katie Bartlett-Thorres, we're just going to spend money. That's not what we're doing, obviously, but again, it's a matter of perception. And I don't know how well in advance the public was informed of our intention to do this. You know, we've always been very transparent, and that's one of the things that I think has led so much credence to what we've done in the past and the endorsement from the public. And I don't want to move away from that. I think we need to keep ourselves very much in an open format so that the public would be aware of what we're doing and why we're doing it and frankly, how much that it's costing us to do it. I don't think we're going to have any kickback at all because, you know, the community knows that we are very progressive and that we want to move forward with an aggressive format. So I don't think that's the issue. I just would like to have seen the public more well-informed, as well as us as the board, to know what was done and, you know, how did we derive at this cost.
I believe that we did, I did share the process in at least two, maybe three committee of the whole meetings. We did discuss it also at the board retreat. And just to kind of give you a synopsis of the process here, the first, the first group we reached out to to discuss this and bringing on a strategic plan consultant was the Department of Education. We actually had a phone conference with David Volkman. He's the Assistant Deputy Secretary and the one that's been working with us on this whole recovery process. And we asked for recommendations from them. They directed us to the IU that actually does the comprehensive plan work for the department, for the entire state. We reached out to that individual. We also reached out to PSBA and asked for some advice. We did not get that, any recommendations from those groups. We did share with the department Performance Fact and the fact that one of the consultants on that group was actually working with the department on the pill courses. Those are the courses that I had to take for my superintendency and the principals needed to take. They felt that that was a good person. They also indicated that with the scope of what we were trying to do, that they did agree that we could not do it internally, that it would be helpful to get a facilitator. And subsequently, after we went through that process and did identify Performance Fact, they really popped to the top. There was a couple others we reached out to. I can't remember the name of the one that was working with Allentown. They did not respond back to us. But this company has bubbled to the top time and time again when we discussed this with different individuals. I believe I did share at one of the committee, the whole meetings, that I did reach out to five school districts that did use this company, including State College, who's used them twice, to a district. They all said that they were the best facilitators for the plan and that we would not be disappointed with the work that they were doing. They felt that, you know, they brought a lot of expertise to the process. And these districts, except for State College, that we spoke to, were very similar in size to us and socioeconomic. It was Kansas City. We had a school district that was in Texas Bee that I think we spoke to, and there was another one in Washington that I spoke to. So those districts all felt that this was, would be a good approach. They also really liked, and something that I was very concerned about is follow-up because I've been involved in these plans in the past and they've been developed and then they go on a shelf and we go on our merry way and do something else. And all of them felt that the follow-through with, with these consultants afterwards was very helpful in helping them implement the plan. And they felt that because of this process, they were able to move their scores and improve student achievement in their districts.
Perfect. Are we subject to additional fees for follow-up in addition to this contract?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Okay. I mean, I was gonna say, it would be reasonable for someone to charge more if they have to come back and continually, you know?
I would also like to point out that when we applied for our Educational Access Grant, that was the grant application that they put together for the 14 million, we did include the proposal that we have here where we're going to do a two-pronged approach to recovery, where we would be working with our financial administrator to really identify some more savings opportunities so that we can reinvest additional funding back into the educational process and then at the same time develop the strategic plan, which would put together the educational initiatives with the cost over the next several years, which could be then incorporated back into the Financial Recovery Plan. So that was submitted to the department. They did send it back and ask for signatures. So at this point, it was tentatively approved and we're just waiting for a department-approved signature for those funds to be released. So they are well-aware of what we are doing and have been supportive.
Thanks, Mr. Polino. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Yes, Ms. Meany?
I noticed, Brian, that there was a charge, $500 fee if we had to cancel any meeting.
Yes.
And I laughed when I read it because, of course, we just went through the record-breaking snowstorm.
Right.
With that in mind, they wouldn't probably be able to make it in anyways to facilitate, but I just wanted to bring that up as just a little, I'd hate for us to be charged $500 because we had another negative snowstorm and we had to cancel.
Right. I can talk to them about it. I believe that the reason for that is because we, this week, we actually hashed out the actual dates that they would be here. So they're, they're moving ahead and trying to get travel arrangements for those, those dates. So we, we're comfortable with the dates. Most of them, we have a couple in February and a couple in March. So we will, we'll check on that tomorrow and see if we can get them to agree that, you know, if there's an act of God, that we would be able to do something.
I also understand that, or I believe to assume, that the surveys are now part of that price.
Yes. Yes, they are.
And that we're also limited in the number of people that have access to the toolbox, I believe. Is that for a system toolbox? There's 20 licenses perhaps? Do you feel that that's going to be enough for a plan this size? And if you've talked to anybody, any of the other school districts that have utilized this, because it seems like a lot of the work is going to be done within that toolbox.
Yeah, that's a good question. We can, we can follow up on that. Just off the top of my head, though, I think with the 15 schools, if we gave licenses to those 15 schools, that we could, five at this office would be sufficient to really operate.
I do want to say that I did do quite a bit of research extensively on this. The Department of Ed has used this company. They've used it with their IU as well recently. I believe that there was potentially a little bit of misunderstanding in the implementation with the IU recently, the rollout of that program. So maybe you could go back and, and check into that so that we don't have the same issues as we move forward. State College's plan on their website is incredibly impressive. I also noticed underneath other schools in the Commonwealth that have used this company, one of them that concerned me was Chester Upland, who right now is in a great deal of distress. But I don't know if we know how long ago that was?
That was back in the two, early 2000s.
Wonderful. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes. Yeah, we did look at that, and they have a continual turnover of school board and administration, which is understandable that why they would not follow through there.
And I guess I just wanted to reassure the Erie community that I believe that this is something our district needs to take on at this point. We have had so much disruption in our schools. Our students have been disrupted, our teachers have been disrupted, our community has been disrupted. And it's wonderful that we are going to take all their voices and listen to what they have to say and what they feel we need to do as a district to move forward, to provide our students with the best education we possibly can. I also feel that it's a good time for us because Erie as well is going through the same process. And there was a lot of commitments by politicians that they were going to be running to support our district, and I need to, I feel that we need to take them up on that, hold them to that, and all work together as a community to really make this be a very successful adventure. I also like the fact that there's a lot of professional development in this plan because I feel that that's something that our, our teachers haven't had for a long period of time. And I do think that also the premise of this program is that all students will succeed if their needs are met. So we will be looking at the whole child and we'll be looking at all of their needs, not just their academic needs as we move forward, and I also think that that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? As far as, do we still have a promise for the monies? Some of the monies?
We have an informal commitment and encouragement to apply for two separate organizations to fund up to $60,000.
Okay.
Called above?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Fabrizi?
Yes.
Mrs. Steen?
Yes.
Mr. Harkin?
Yes.
Mrs. McNair?
Yes.
Mr. Spiegel?
Yes.
Mr. Titus?
Yes.
Mr. Cassillo?
Yes.
Mr. Petronas?
Yes.
Do we have any other matter? If not, I'll obtain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved?
Again. Moved by Mr. Cassillo, seconded by Mr. Spiegel. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned. We'll take a short five-minute recess here, and then we'll get to our committee of the whole. Okay, we're going to open the meeting. Well, the Pledge of Allegiance, once again, followed by a moment of silence, led by Mr. Brockman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Is there anybody who'd like to, hearing the citizens, we have two minutes available. If anybody would like to speak. Not seeing any, we will move on. Discussion on the 2016-17 audit by Corey Johnson and Dan Cepick, local auditors from, oh, I'm not even going to try.
ZA. That works.
Here you go. You got the floor.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Trying to put together a little, little handout for you. Sure, with any ones.
Here, it could be helpful, you can sit here and use a microphone.
Sure, I got a big mouth. I can do whatever's easy.
Glad to see the snow was just melting instead of coming down on the way up. I was telling Dave, I was up here for a wrestling tournament all weekend at Meadville, and man, the weather was just brutal. I mean, from 79 to Meadville, there was 78 cars in the ditch each day, both ways. It was a long weekend.
Has everybody got a copy?
Yes.
All right, I believe so. I'm just walking you through this one. Let me start, I'm Corey Johnson, I'm the partner from ZA. This is our second year doing the audit here at the City of Erie School District. This is Dan Cepick, he's the manager on the job. He's been, been with us as well for the last two years, so I think we've gotten to know the district pretty well. You know, last year, I remember coming up and I was a little nervous about that meeting. You know, we had made some, we had some tough topics to talk about. And so I said on the way, I was telling Dan on the way up here this year, I said, this one's going to be, this is good. This is good this year. I think, I know you've already been briefed on the numbers and so forth, that I wasn't going to kill you with all the detail then, but, you know, it's, it's been a good year in terms of where the district's gone from a financial perspective. You know, there's, there's a lot of districts out there that are just struggling to make ends meet, so to say. And I think you guys have a really good plan in place, and I think you got the right team in place to execute that plan, which is of vital importance. If you don't have both of those pieces, you fail. Nobody plans to fail, you fail the plan. And that's just how it goes. Results of the audit, the audit was performed in accordance with general accepted auditing standards. It was an unmodified opinion. It's the highest level of assurance we can give you. Basically means we believe everything in the report to be materially accurate. The single audit report, again, that's the report where we look at it, you know, your, your numbers on a couple of levels. We look at it particularly from a compliance perspective. It's the federal dollars running through the district. We have to perform certain special, I call it additional procedures on those dollars. We looked at three programs this year that are listed in the report. We had no findings, and that's, that's amazing. We don't have many clients where we don't have findings. So that means, you know, the people running the program, the actual compliance with those dollars, were they spending according to the way that grant could be spent? Did cash that came in and did it go out in a timely manner? Did, did that person, were they eligible to receive that assistance, et cetera, et cetera? Like, it's really detailed testing, and we had no problems along the lines of the single audit. So that's, that's good. I mean, you're getting towards low-risk auditee status, which is, you know, that's good news. I mean, it's, you know, it makes the district look good. It makes, you know, I think it shows that people know what they're doing with the funds. And I'm telling you, trying to stay low-risk auditee status isn't easy anymore with all the changes in regulations. I mean, there's constant changes in, in each one of these programs and how dollars are going to be spent, used eligibility requirements, reporting requirements to the state, on and on and on. They get hard to keep up with. And I think, you know, you guys don't look a challenge, so, didn't want to tell you about that. Just some required communications that we're required to have with those charged with governance. We did not have any difficulties in performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management. Management did sign before we issued our audit report a representation letter. Brian and Dave said they were honest with us, which is good. We are required to get that. There was no management consultations with other accountants, you know, no, no opinion shopping on issues or anything like that. I think, I think we've gotten to the point where throughout the year there, we have discussions, and if there's issues that come up, accounting topics, we talk throughout the year, so we're not, you know, we're not trying to deal with issues at the end of an audit, we try to deal with it before we get here. So anything with new, new accounting standards, et cetera, we're always trying to be in the forefront of that. You know, one thing I do want to note, that there was no, there was no new GASP's, which is the world we all live in, governmental accounting standards, that affected you guys this year. There will be one next year for OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits. And really, you probably look at your statement of net position and be like, man, what does this mean? Because it used to just be assets, liabilities, net, net position, retained earnings, whatever you want to call it. Now they came up with these things called deferred inflows of resources, deferred out flows of resources. Most of them are related to your pension. Basically, they're applying the same concept to other post-employment benefits. So that's all that's coming on. The liability's already on the books. But it does, it does convolute the statements more. It really does. It makes it harder for the average person to look at a financial statement and understand what it means. It's hard to sit here and explain. It's trying to take all these things that they used to amortize over a 30-year period, they condensed that period that's usually somewhere between the three and a half to five and a half of your window, and they just are sitting them on the balance sheet. That's really what it is, so. Good stuff. So financial statement overview, obviously the auditor's report, I know you guys all have a copy, it's on the first three pages, I've already said it's an unmodified opinion. If you're going to spend a lot of time, if you want to spend 20 minutes trying to get a solid handle on your financial statements, it's the next one, the management discussion and analysis, pages four through 15. What that's supposed to do is give you, it gives you a year-to-year look at a, at a high level, a year-to-year look in why things changed. If that makes sense. That's what that's supposed to do. So then you have the government-wide financial statements. Again, that's the statements that are supposed to look like a business, all your debts on there, your net pension liability, your other post-employment benefit liability, capital assets are the big ones that aren't on the fund level, they're not in your general fund. They're the ones that kind of come on these business-type-looking statements. And then you have the notes to the financial statements. I will say, there's no significant new notes to talk about. I mean, I know that, the one big thing I want to say is last year, obviously, the, when we talked about the auditor's opinion, there was a going concern in the opinion. That going concern has been pulled. So that's positive. That's great news. And, and, you know, it deserves to be pulled. You look at, fund balances pretty much break even right now. That was a four and a half million dollar change in the general fund in the current year. That's huge. And I think we've sat with management, we've looked at their projections. Going concern means, you know, is the entity going to be viable a year from now, effectively is what it means. We absolutely think it's going to be. And I think every projection we've looked at's reasonable, makes sense, and, you know, things are trending well. So there was, there was a lot of reason to pull that going concern. So that's the, really, the biggest change from last year's financial statements to this year's management statements. You know, you look at the statement of net position, it's a negative $200 million balance. You got to remember, 10 years ago, you didn't have to put a net pension liability on the financial statements. There's your negative net position. Between that and, I think, OPEB was about $20 million. So there's a big change in what's happened 10 years ago to now. They make all these liabilities now a part of the financial statements that didn't use to be there. Again, that's a future liability that you're going to pay out over a long period of time. And as you know, that's all calculated by the state in your case, it's all pieces.
Corey, can you take a minute to explain that pension liability and why it's on our books? It's, and how much is it? Is it 200 million?
Yeah, it's 284, 285 million.
Yeah.
So a couple of years ago, the accounting gods in their infinite wisdom, they're trying to close the gap. And I get it in theory, they are. They're trying to close the gap on all these, what's out there in the future that we got to pay? They're trying to give a reader a sense of what promises have we made? How you put a timeline to it, it's an estimate. I mean, all these things are estimates, but it's, but there's some logic to the estimate. That's why it's on there, because promises have been made, and every school district is going to owe their employees for, you know, their years of service, as long as they've vested and met certain requirements. They're going to owe for those years of service. That's why it's on there, and that's why the other post-employment benefits is no different. That's why that liability's on the books as well. I always said, the accounting world, the people who come up with these accounting standards, I think until those two standards came out, they were never trying to affect policy. But I personally believe those two were to affect policy. They were trying to tell people making decisions, you realize what you owe in the future. We're going to make you calculate it so you, so you have a conceptual view of, you know, what, what promises you made and the value of those promises. So I think that's kind of where it came from.
Just to clarify, we did not make those promises. The state made those promises.
Good point.
That's our share. The state's pension is currently, I believe, $45 billion underfunded, meaning that the benefits promised for current employees, what they've earned so far, is $45 billion more than the cash they have in the bank. So the 284 million is the share that we're responsible for, or we will be responsible for paying over the next 30 years for our employees.
The state had a hard time coming up with their estimates. I do a lot of work with the state. They ran that calculation numerous times. I will tell you this, when you look at, like, what, what big parts of that calculation affect that number, the main one is, it's called the discount rate. That's basically the assumed rate of return on the investments in the fund. They're using 7.25 percent. I will tell you this, I do work in other states as well. 7.25 percent is pretty unrealistic when you, think, think about what that means, what I'm saying, when you look at what they're allowed to invest in. So if you, if you just take a very simplistic example, if you say, you know, 60, 70 percent of my portfolio is fixed income, right, in some sort, so you're earning less than a percent, right? So what does the other half, or the other, or the other 30 or 40 percent have to earn to have a blended seven and a quarter? What's out there earning that right now, or what has been in the last five years?
Without being speculative.
Yeah. Without getting into too risky of an investment, I mean, there's certain, the way the state, their rules, they have to follow certain investment grades. So what I'm trying to tell you is, I mean, I do work in New Jersey, and I look, they actually use- Without getting into too risky of an investment, I mean, there's certain, the way the state, their rules, they have to follow certain investment grades. So what I'm trying to tell you is, I mean, I do work in New Jersey, and I look, they actually use a more realistic rate, which is sometimes, but they were using like four and three quarters, but they did a calculation to back it up. Fine, it was definitely more realistic than seven and a quarter. So imagine, it's in your footnotes, if you ever just want to have a laugh. Look at your pension footnote, and look at what a 1% change does. It's in there, it probably takes that liability from 284 to probably 384, 400, just 1%. So the state in general is very underfunded, to Brian's point, and, you know, I mean, there's nothing anyway that this table's going to do about that. It's going to have to be some legislative decisions that impact that. But that number, that liability's going to keep growing, is what I'm here to tell you. There's no way around that. It grew $42 million from last year. So when you look on the statement of activities, which is the income statement, again, when I talked about the statements that are trying to be a business on that one, there was a $9 million deficit in the current year. Well, 42 was the increase in the pension liability. And 1 million, you had 1 million was, I think, the increase, care to take 1 million was the increase in the OPEB liability. That's going to continue to happen, that trend, that trend's going to happen, so really no way around it. But anyways, so to wrap things up, I mean, I think that the district's on a good path. I mean, the consolidation, the plan, the plan's in place. Fund balances back to a break even fund balances, what, you know, is the ultimate guiding factor. I think that's what everybody looks at, that's what the rating agencies in particular really want to get a handle on. I think things are going in the right direction. The projections look good, and things are solid. Yes, I'm sorry.
Sir, how long do you think our bond rating will notice an effective change as a function of this? And what we're doing with the whole?
Logic says it's not, you know, with the projections in place, logic says it's not going to go down. How fast will it go up? A lot of them go, I sit on a two-hour call every year with Allegheny County, one of my clients, with Moody's, and they'll grow me for two years about their pension and OPEB plans. I mean, honest to God, they don't ask me another question about the financial statements. That's all they ask about. And I think, in your case, if you can take that and spin it, and talk about the aid package, and how it's written, how it's written into the state budget now, you know, I think things go, get improved. I wish I could give you a more definitive answer. They're a little quirky, but, I mean, I think you have a, you have strong standing to make an argument for where you've been to where you're going. That typically improves bond ratings.
We have been talking to PNC about that, with the potential for doing a bond issue and do some renovations. We've been using Standards and Poor in the past, and last year, when we had all these issues swirling, they did not downgrade our bond rating to below junk status. We really thought they were going to do that. The PNC's take on this is they believe that, you know, once we start having those calls, that right now, we're triple B minus with a negative outlook. They think they'll change it, they'll keep it at triple B minus, but have a positive outlook. They also have recommended that we consider using Moody's instead of Standards and Poor because they feel that they might be a little more lenient with us, and also taking into consideration a lot of the things we're doing to help improve our finances. They all, they felt that both of them also would see it as a positive, that we were in financial recovery and have a recovery officer, and that may influence the rating as well. Sorry.
No, that's good. I would second that. Work with the city of Newcastle is one of my clients, and they're an Act 47 status, which for municipalities, not that much different, and they've had this, it's had the same impact for them, so, which has been positive. So that's really it. I wasn't going to kill you with numbers. I wanted to kind of talk about where we were and where we are now, and I think where things are going, which is positive, so. Is there any other questions I can answer?
Just a comment. I want to extend kudos to our executive financial team. I was very much involved in the financial end with prior to Brian coming on board. I'll never forget Brian saying that he'd like to challenge. Poor soul. He had a challenge. But we tried, as, well, myself individually, as well as the board, tried to acquire financial status on a periodic basis, and really tried to get a handle on where we stand at the end of the year. It was so convoluted. It was dispersed over so many different programs. I just stood there, and I lost hair, and what I have left is turning much greater, until Brian came on. And I have to give our superintendent quite a vote of confidence, because he was the one that really took hold of our whole financial package and made it make sense. And if it weren't for Brian and the team, God knows where we'd be today. So with that, I certainly appreciate your report. It's a confidence builder, to say the least. And Brian, again, thank you. Thank you as well.
I'll leave you with one thought, just as a citizen. I served, I've served on many boards as well, and usually I'm the guy that everybody looks at PNC kid. You know, one of the, the first thing that triggers an audit finding, just so you understand, is when we have audit adjustments, if we come in and have to basically help management do the books, that's an automatic audit finding. It's a material weakness. We didn't have any of them. Translation, what does that mean? That means the information you get on a monthly basis to make decisions is good. I know, like, when I'm approached about being on a board, that's the first question I ask. I mean, I can't make decisions without good information. And so I will leave you with that confidence that, you know, things are in good shape.
If I could just take a minute, too, I need to really thank and thank Dave and Randy for their hard work. They have really stepped up over the last year as I've kind of transitioned out of finance and into the superintendency role. I did not, and I'm having some withdrawals, because I wasn't involved in the audit at all this year. I did not close the books, I did not do any journal entries, I did not do any work papers. Those were all done by Dave and Randy, and they did an outstanding job.
Super. Thank you so much.
Thank you, brothers. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Move on to Mr. Kalida with the budget.
Just to continue the discussion about finances, we have a decision to make on our 1819 budget. It's that time of year where we have to, and you do have a handout here, it's just three pages, where we have to make a decision about whether or not we need or want to go over our Act One index. And for the new board members, back in 2006, the state passed legislation that really limited our ability to raise taxes over an inflationary index, that's, and we refer to it as the Act One index. For this year, that is 3.7%. We are allowed to apply for some exceptions to that, to raise our taxes above that without going to referendum. This year, we do not qualify for any of those exceptions. The main one that we were qualified for in the past was the retirement exception, because it was increasing faster than the 3.7% state Act One index. That has slowed down now, so we don't, we don't have the ability to go over the 3.7 without having voter approval to do so. And so when this was put in place, they really accelerated or moved the budget process back, and at this point, we have to make a decision again, right now, this month, whether or not we want to go over that Act One index and ask the voters to approve a referendum for that purpose. And the whole purpose of doing this now is to make sure that we have those decisions made, and we can move ahead and start to put the question on the ballot for the primary. We, if you turn to the next page, we, if you look at our projections, and we did review this a couple of meetings back, if you look at the 1819 projections, you can see, and this is with a half a percent real estate tax increase built in, but it does not have anything for any renovation projects or any add backs on the curricular side. We are looking at a surplus for this year, so I don't, do not believe that we need to move down the path of asking for an additional increase, and I don't believe there is a will on the board to do that, or even raise taxes up to the 3.7. So in order to avoid that whole early process, we have to adopt a resolution by June, or January 17th, indicating that we will not go over the 3.7% index when we set our tax rate in June. So it's my recommendation tonight that we just move ahead and do that, and I would ask that we could, if we could put that on the agenda for our upcoming meeting.
Do you need anything from us, or do you like a poll?
Poll would be great.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Tyler, Charlie, John's? Yes, for me? Tom, we know where you're at. Angela? Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to student support service overview. Ms. Sabrisky.
So I prepared for you packets. There's a lot in here that you may want to take home and look at. Basically, if we look back last year in January, we, that's where we eliminated a lot of the administrators. And one of the administrators was Danny Jones, and with Danny, he was in charge of student support services. And so over the past break, we've had a few issues that have come up, where there's been concerns by the board regarding some student interactions, things like that. And so what I prepared for you with my staff is some of the, number one, if you open it up to the first side, it talks about the law and the requirements for a variety of things. So I'd like to talk through those with you, and then if you have any questions now, again, there's a lot here, and our hope is that you can feel comfortable about the things that are happening currently in the schools, and that we are always continually looking to make sure our students are safe, secure, and healthy in our buildings. So the, on the left side, I put, basically, this is an overview of all of the different things that we have, but the laws are very, very specific. And so for the four areas, I have the suicide prevention awareness information, we have the policy that was passed by the board, the mandatory child abuse training and reporting is also in there. Bullying prevention is a topic of conversation that we have a policy on, and then the homeless student policy is in there as well. So this whole side, this whole left side, really shares with you the policies that we have in place, and it also shares with you, from start to finish, the procedures that we go through. The training that takes place, I can speak to that a little bit, but that whole area really is very clear. What we do is we get committees together, the committees work, and on those committees, we have experts in the field. So for example, if we're talking about child abuse, we're getting OCY at the table, we're getting our counselors, our psychologists, our administrators, and then again, our attorneys are involved as well. So Jen Gornal, who is unable to be here today, but has also added the piece on the very next page, this was where it talks about child abuse and suicide awareness training. She's been instrumental over the past eight, 10 years that I've been in HR and in, as Assistant Super, in looking at the policy, making sure our teachers are prepared, making sure our entire staff are aware of the policy and of the laws and of the procedures that must take place, specifically in all of those four areas. So again, that left side gives you some good documentation for you to take some time to look at, and then if you have any questions. We are on timelines with those specific things. For example, the last time we had our full-blown training for our entire staff on child abuse was four years ago. It's a five-year rotation, so we have to train again our entire staff, refresher courses and things like that. Before anyone is hired, they must have child abuse training to be aware that they're mandatory reporters, and they have so many hours of work that has to be covered. We go through the crime victim center to have the training, they give the certification to HR, and then we have that, knowing that they have been certified. We are very, very careful, they can come and audit those things, so we do make sure that we maintain all of that. That's the first side, the logistics of it. On the other side, I also wanted to give you some of the resources we have. And with it, I put in the sheet, talking about suicide prevention and SAP training. That, again, is another very, very extensive amount of time that we spend with our staff and training our staff. Training the schools, training the teachers, what do we do if we have a child that is in need? What's the steps we take? And then as a building, what do they do? On those teams, the personnel that's involved are the school administrators, the nurses, the counselors, the behavior specialists, the mental health specialists. So all of that is part of that. I also shared a few of the things that some of our schools are doing, and the sheets that are here are for you to take back and look at. We do have a suicide prevention program. I do want to, I brought these, these are our pieces of the curriculum that we have, so you're more than welcome to look at them. I can get two copies of them. All of our health and physical education teachers have that, along with the FLASH program. The FLASH curriculum is dealing with sex education, and that, too, was passed by the board. So we have our suicide prevention beginning in sixth grade all the way to 12th grade, and that takes place in our health and phys ed. Not only are our health and phys ed teachers trained, our guidance counselors, our nurses, and our behavior specialists and mental health specialists are there and available, and they are available to work with our staff. We do have some bullying prevention programs going on. Character Be About It, it comes, and that's the brochure that I have there. There is a video done by Matt Harris. He is one of the state troopers. He has a program in five of our schools currently in our elementary. We're expanding it with our police department. We would like our police department to be part of the proactive side, and so right now, we have at least three that are going to be trained by Matt Harris, so that they can go into our classrooms and really work with students and get, develop relationships. Again, our biggest thing that we see is success for students is in building relationships with our students, so they feel comfortable to go to an adult if they're in crisis of any kind, if they're in need of anything, and any of the other pieces that are the side of student support. And then I did add for you the other proactive things we're doing. We do have satellite services from Safe Harbor in some of our schools, so that's in there, so you know that. And then the positive school-wide behavior support, and Mr. Nixon had shared a little bit with you on that in the past, and so I gave you some flyers so that you can sit down and see what that truly is, and if you have any other questions, feel free to contact me. Angie Kanaki has taken on our guidance counselors, our mental health specialists, so she supervises all of them, along with working with Ken. Ken handles the positive behavior support and working with diversity with anyone who is having an issue. We utilize Ken for Title IX harassment. He handles all of that. Neil handles our homeless. So what I have to say is, I meet with these people every week. We meet every Thursday, we have a meeting to sit down and talk about how things are going. I feel that what we've done with the programming that we have to have has been streamlined, and that these adults who are supervising the group in meeting with their teams were always being proactive and working towards helping our students. And then the last thing I have in there is from Wilson, one of the programs that Wilson has is peer mediation, and it's students helping students deal with conflict resolution. And so that program is going to be now moved over to Erie High. We're working on doing that, and again, in each of our buildings, we're working to try to get all the buildings to have programming that's similar. And with the strategic plan that we're talking about, there is a lot of work that's going to be with our curriculum, but this is a whole section that we want to really see what's I'm a little more long-winded than my superintendent, but, was I okay?
I'd just like to, I just, Mr. President?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that, like, the peer mediation at Wilson and extending it to Erie High, I believe in that wholeheartedly. I mean, at one point, our district had more, it was district-wide peer mediation, and it was, I think it was a successful program even back then, but as time went on, finances or whatever, it kind of, but they held on to it, Wilson. And I'm glad that they did because it kind of gives us something to push towards Erie High because all of what we're talking about, if the kids, the kids are in contact with the kids, they're the ones that know what's going on. And I'm not saying that, you know, we're going to depend on the kids to, you know, to do everything, but it certainly is a good thing to get kids involved in the peer mediation because then, they're aware of things sometimes that we're not, no matter how hard we try. They're aware of it. And so, I think that, I think that that is an essential thing, and I'm very, very happy to see us moving that into Erie High because I think it's very much needed. So that's all. Thank you.
A general question, perhaps I should ask Neil. You know, regarding our homeless students, do we have a number?
131.
131?
As of today.
But that is varying degrees of homelessness. That's not people living on the street?
That is anybody who meets the federal definition of homeless, so their housing is not fixed, regular, or adequate. Doubled up on a couch because you were evicted from your home, they're considered homeless. So we're not talking that there's 131 students living on the street, that means that there's 131 students who meet that definition.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jenna.
My question is, how are we assessing, or getting feedback, I guess, from the kids to know that they feel that these programs are effective, that they feel, you know, that they are being heard? Like, what is just our pulse? Like, are we, are we doing, like, monthly check-ins? I mean, just how are we collecting the data?
For which specific area?
I'm sorry, because we did jump, my brain is over here. I'm talking more about the suicide prevention, the SAP, the SAP programs.
So, in each building, they usually have, they have weekly SAP meetings. So they, the building principal, or even best in the elementary schools. And usually, they meet and they review the cases with a student, well, regarding the students, and then, they have interventions that they're going to put in place. Those interventions are then tried, and then, they are checking. I would say, and any of my colleagues, feel free to jump in, it is usually the teacher of the student that would have the best pulse on what's happening. But a lot of times, we have one person who's taking cases, like, a counselor might take a case, a behavior specialist, and someone else, and then, they're tracking that student, talking with that student. The mental health specialists, Angie, they keep very good track of the SAP information. Maybe you would be able to look into or know exactly how they're tracking student feelings, and that's what I'm assuming you're saying.
I think at this point, it probably, I don't think, Tyler, that you're thinking formal, if you're looking for a formal survey or a formal assessment, I don't know that we have that in place, and you know, we've got some of these people to look at doing, but I think, as you were saying, that they kind of keep track of that more based on their, you know, their record keeping and the fact that, you know, the student, they really felt, we actually got a training today, Ken and I, and we came in for part of it, we sat down and had a virtual meeting with Perry Rosen, who's the director of the Gary Lee's Youth Suicide Prevention Grant. They're going to give us some resources and let us benefit and have a site license for the behavioral health screening. And we're going to, that's trying to help identify other students other than those students who are formally referred to the SAP program who might be out there in need of some support. But what I, the gist I got, and Ken, you know, feel free to chime in, is that I think that our mental health specialists feel that they have really good relationships with the students who are referred to SAP, and that they do keep really, you know, good, tight records. But there are still kids out there who we might not be reaching just because they don't have any, like, red flags, you know, that are, have identified them to be referred for SAP. So we're kind of looking along those lines to find something to, you know, to capture those students who just don't have the red flags that we're, you know, we're recognizing this kid has a need and we need to, we need to involve them.
I can piggyback then, so you asked about formal surveys, so we actually do use, it's called the P A S, which is a P A U survey, and that's done seventh through 12th grade. That was done, the one thing about the P A S survey for screening that's done is it actually takes a little more time because you have to actually mail it in to get the feedback. But what we, what we did this year was we did the P A School Climate Survey, which was kind of a big push. We surveyed students, third grade, 12th grade, staff, parents, and community. So, and right now, I'm actually going around and meeting with the individual schools on their detail, on their detailed reports, which goes over all the data, which is what you're speaking of. So you actually have two, you have, one is a P A U survey, and the other one is a School Climate Survey. And School Climate was done, is like, two years ago, and so, we just put on, in conversation with, having this big reconfiguration, wanted to make sure we had something to get a pulse of, kind of what the students' perspective is. So I have all those reports, I mean, I could, I could share that information with you. I believe that is kind of a plan that Mr. Plito did have, that I would, one, I would be sharing some of that with you. But, so those are the two surveys that we do to get the students' voice.
Thank you. I would love, I would love to see those things personally. And I think, you know, maybe we, we should consider more informal, routine, pretty routine ones. Not only does it kind of give us a better sense of what's going on in the classroom, but it's also equipping the kids with the vocabulary and the understanding that these are things that I can talk about. A lot of kids don't know that they can even, this should be an issue for them. And so, I mean, just very simple, informal, they can even be anonymous for dropping them off in the classroom, the whole of the school, just so we get a sense of what's really going on. I am worried about, I mean, any life loss is a serious issue, and I'm just worried that we're doing all these wonderful things, but still, some kids don't feel that they have access to them. And if there's simple, simple things that we could do, I think that we should absolutely, and I think it sounds like part of the action plan that we're doing is going to include that.
Okay. Oh, sorry.
So, I didn't realize, because I did not teach in sixth or 12th grade, that the State of Pennsylvania in 2014 established Act 71, which is the Youth Suicide Awareness and Prevention Training. And so, I'm just asking for my own understanding of, does this law work the same way as a child abuse? So the paperwork is sent downstate, and the teachers are trained every five years? Or how does this training go about? Because it says that teachers are supposed to be trained, every teacher's supposed to be trained from grade six through 12.
Correct. And so, it's, we have to have four hours of training. And so, last year, we did a full hour of training, and we had Mandy Fogle from Safe Harbor who presented with our, Danny was here at the time, so Danny was with us, and Patty Paladis, who was our mental health specialist, and our psychologists. So they trained, we did a train with such a large district. What we have typically done was we would have the training, and Jen Gornal was there to, again, continue the work with procedures and making sure we're covering everything we have to. We did it at Erie High in the library, and we did the administrators, the guidance counselors, the behavior specialists, the mental health specialists, and the nurses. And from there, each team went back to the building and trained everyone else. And so, if, again, those are our, a lot of our segues and our communication has to be done with the larger group. Because when we do some things with the entire staff, we have so many, there's over 800 teachers. To try to get them to truly take this very serious information and to internalize it and understand how important it is, it's easier in small groups and it's easier in their buildings with their building administrators. So we have had teams of people who are going there and doing that whole process with them. And our mental health specialists, or our behavior staff, and our administrators and counselors and nurses have really, they know the magnitude, they see it every day. They do, and they're there to support our teachers and our non-instructional staff if they see something, for example, child abuse of some kind, or if they're, they feel alarmed or aware that they have a concern about a student. It's usually an immediate thing that we look into.
And do we have any follow-up on that? So, do the teachers get a chance to then to respond at the end of that training that they do in fact feel very confident in their understanding of the procedures of the district? And, I mean, do we do any kind of sign-off, or do you have any question or survey or follow-up?
They have to have the Act 48, we do the Act 48, so with the Act 48, they go on Business Plus for the session they have so that we have documentation that they've been trained. And then, we've talked about, and we haven't gotten there, and that could be another thing for a strategic plan, is the evaluation side of the tool that we would use. I know, when we look at child abuse, and the Crime Victims Center does not do an assessment after they leave, but if you do the PIT one, there's one, an online one, they actually have an assessment tool that shows if you passed what you had. Where, we've talked about that with Teresa's, beginning the discussion on child, the child abuse, do we do something more online when you have 850 teachers? And then, have a discussion in the buildings, in the faculty meeting about what they learned, and then, we would have some type of an assessment that shows that they had passed. The only thing they do is the actual certification from Crime Victims Center.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And do we have statistics that compare our school district to other school districts or similar to us as far as rate of suicide?
I have, I don't have that, I can, we can start looking in and seeing if we have anything.
I'm not saying to do that, I'm just wondering. Because I don't hear it, I have not heard of it frequently. Only a couple of times that I ever recall, you know, as a child.
The P A S survey does have that information. So we could, we could find that easily if we go back and look at our P A S data.
Mr. President, I just have one more question. Going back to the peer mediation at Erie High, where do we stand on that? I mean, how far along are we? Are we, have we, have we brought people, I mean, have we started identifying students that are going to participate, or?
We, what happened, I don't know if you want to speak to it because the Wilson team is working with the Erie High team. So we already have students who are trained from Wilson, who will be the starting point over at Erie High.
So I guess, as of right now, so the behavior intervention specialists are supported by Family Services. And so, Shannon Loughlin, who's at Wilson Middle School, has been there, he's been there for years, and he's one of the big proponents behind the peer mediation model. But what we did so far was just kind of made that connection with Family Services, they agreed to want to move that, move us, move in that direction. What we did was we took the last three years of peer mediators and sent that to Erie High and the collegiate so that those principals knew that these, these kids have been trained and they're used to doing conflict resolution peer-to-peer.
Right.
So that's kind of, that was the first wave. And then, the next piece is, we're actually connected with Michael E. Curtsey, looking into the peer mediation program.
Yes, absolutely.
But there's also two that we've actually looked at a little bit. There's a project piece with the P A bar, and then, there's another one called Restorative Justice. So we just, we kind of talked about that a little bit too, but they are kind of the same thing, they're like a peer mediation group, we're having conversations. So that's, that's the next step, though, is to get, Family Services has agreed to pay for two of the behavior intervention specialists to be trained in the peer mediation model, and then, we're going to, those two will be training the other behavior intervention specialists, so it will eventually be trickled throughout the district. So we'd like to see that in every, in all the, all the schools from elementary all the way up.
Right. That way, the kids would be trained from the, I mean, as years go on, kids would be trained all the way through. By the time they got to Erie High, we'd know exactly these kids.
Yeah.
And they would know that the programs are available. And going to your point is that if a kid, if a kid has been, knows who to go to, a kid sometimes is more apt to go to a kid than they are to any other people, or before the teacher identifies it, and maybe that kid can help that kid get the help they need. So that's why I'm very, very, you know, interested in making sure that that keeps moving forward.
And there's, there's one other aspect, just real quick, is peer mentoring. So peer mentoring is when you have the older, older grade level students that are working with the younger grade level students, and that's really just a mentoring piece. That could be, like, at breakfast time, going over homework, you know, discussing maybe homework strategies, playing a board game, but just actually building relationships. So there actually are two of those components. You have peer mediation, which is conflict resolution peer-to-peer, and then, you have peer mentoring, which is, which is older grade level, so fourth and fifth grade working with your K to two, and then, your seventh, eighth working with your sixth, and your 11th and 12th working with your ninth and 10th. So that is another model we're moving to.
Very happy about it.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business. Anybody have anything?
Jeremy?
Yes.
Item 6.08, Sanctuary-Based Learning Program Classroom Edition. Could somebody tell me what that is?
I presented on that.
I'm sorry.
I presented on that at the last meeting, were you at the last meeting?
No.
I presented about the...
Oh, the regular board meeting?
Yeah, it was the regular board meeting.
It was the committee of...
I presented on that.
I got you. Now, thank you for jogging my terrible memory. Also, the Correction to Salary Reclassification Instruction, 6.28. Could someone enlighten me on that?
I believe, without looking exactly at who it is, I believe it was someone who reclassified and did not provide the transcript, the documentation, so we had to move them back to their old classification.
All right.
For example, if they, if they submitted paperwork that said they achieved their master's degree and didn't provide the diploma or the transcript that they got it, we have to put them back to their old system.
Thank you. Lastly, the Refund of Taxes Due to Overpayments, Duprogram Payments, or Credit Memos for the 1718 tax year. That's item 634.
David terminated.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, so that's a letter that we get from the City Treasurer's Office, which really, if anybody overpaid their real estate taxes and they remitted those funds to us, we then have to pay it back to the property owners directly. I think there's some credit moments or issue for reduction of assessed values on there, where we remitted the taxes, so basically, we have the money, so we just have to then pay it back.
You refunded it.
So we've refunded, we've refunded property owners directly since we hold that fund, since the Treasurer's Office gave it to us already.
Thank you.
Just a three-part question?
I'm done. I'm done. Well, I do, no.
I'm new to this, so bear with me. But we did receive all these postings, and I don't know where that falls in this year. If I want to discuss the postings that we were presented with?
Can she talk about that now, or should we do it in seconds?
Do I do that in seconds?
The way she does it in seconds.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have something?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I wanted to bring something up, and the administration is aware of it, and the board mayor may not be, and I don't need a response to that, I just would like to express an interest and a concern about something and have the administration react to it when it feels comfortable. But to do that, I just have to chronologically kind of explain something. June Carr was a longtime school district secretary and president of the Education Secretaries Association for many years. Her husband, Tom, was an electricity teacher at Tech High School, a very well-thought-of, very good teacher. He also was an outstanding, highly regarded wrestling coach who put Tech High School on the map with several state champions among the fifth. Late last summer, when we made the, after we made the transition to the new high school, I heard from Mrs. Carr, who was an emotional person, and I respect her for that. And she was concerned that those trophies that those wrestlers had earned and were on display, had been on display in the hallway at Tech, and then, Central were being removed, and she was concerned that something was going to happen to them. And at the time, I had a conversation with Mrs. Devlin, and she assured me that they were removed from the hallway in advance of the volunteers coming in that big weekend when there was going to be a lot of people coming and going from the building, and out of concern for protection of those trophies, Mrs. Devlin said they were locked safely in a room, and at some future time, she and her, the administration was going to work on an appropriate way to honor those, and all the other achievement trophies, et cetera, plaques that were in the high schools that got affected by the change to the one high school. So I accepted that. But then, again, just before Christmas, I heard from Mrs. Carr, and she was upset again because, for whatever reason, she believed that we still weren't going to follow through, and those trophies weren't going to be adequately respected or displayed. And, of course, one of the reasons we do that is that we want to honor the achievement... to honor the achievement of our students and student athletes, and also have other students point to them as role models, and be made aware that they too can strive for greatness, extraordinary things. She had another question or concern. These two people, June Carr and Tom Carr, had a son named Tom Carr Jr., who was a two-sport athlete at Tech High School. And he went on to be in the United States Air Force as a fighter pilot, and he died on active duty. And two separate, two superintendents ago, and a couple of boards ago, we honored that loss of that, the life of that serviceman and outstanding student by a plaque and a picture in the lobby of the high school. And that has been taken down. So those things were on Mr. and Mrs. Carr's mind. And she called me about it in mid-December, and she said she had been talking to Mary Shen and Ed Brusinski too. And she said that the administration told her that they would meet with her after the holidays and listen to our concerns. And I thought that was the appropriate and right thing to do, and I'm glad they were going to do that. And then the bad weather hit. And then I guess the meeting was held somewhere close to the first of the year, and I salute the administration for having the meeting and not having been there. I'm bringing all this up now because I haven't had a chance to follow through and talk to anybody. And it occurs to me, it's just as well to have other board members hear it and at the appropriate time, if the administration wants to explain and help us understand what their intentions are. Because as I said, she's appropriately emotional about all of this, and we have to, I respect that, and I'm sure everyone wants to. And I don't know who, I'm not complaining. I'm just saying I'm very appreciative, and I salute the administration for having sat down with the Carr fam, Mr. and Mrs. Carr, to talk about it. But she left a meeting upset and not satisfied that we're giving a plaque in the hallway, lobby of the auditorium, towards her son, who we had honored, like, as if we're taking an honor away. And she's unhappy with what we're doing so far with the trophies. And so she may or may not have reason to be as upset as she was, but she is, and I just feel an obligation to respect that and bring it up. Now, I say all that without having had the chance to talk to anybody in the administration, so I'm bringing it up now. And if, if the administration wants to respond now, if they want to take some time or report back to us maybe at the next meeting, that's fine, because I realize we have an executive session now, and I don't want us to spend that much more time on a winter night. But I just wanted to chronologically go through all that and say that I've been satisfied that Mrs. Devlin and Mr. Dolstran want to honor the past achievements of past athletes in all of the high schools that came together at Tech. But I just, I felt I owed the situation an explanation here tonight, and to bring it to the attention of everyone, and just ask that at some time, could the administration respond with what it is they intend to do, and what their rationale is. That's all.
Right. I can respond. We, we did have a chance to meet with Mr. and Mrs. Carr right after the holiday, and discuss her concerns with those plaques, and, and for the rest of the central trophies in general. And I just want to, just give you a little background on, on that. We did, the plaques and trophies for Strong Vincent and East are still at those buildings. We, we took the plaques and trophies for Central down over the summer for a couple of reasons. One, we wanted to make sure they were secured, because we had BMS cat in the building, and those employees, and things were starting to come up missing. And also, we had the thousands of Servery volunteers going through the building. So we wanted to make sure those were secure, so that we can honor those individuals at a later date. The other thing that we were very concerned about when we did the reconfiguration is merging the three buildings into one, and only honoring the Central athletes and not the Strong Vincent and East. So we felt it was important to, to make sure that we would, if we're going to honor athletes in our high school, that we would honor them from all our buildings. So our intention was that, you know, at that point, we were looking at, you know, hopefully, starting a renovation project this coming summer. We were looking for the long term to try to find a way, when we renovated the gym, to create an area to honor all our past athletes from all our buildings properly in that building. That, because of the, how things dragged on with the, the 14 million and not getting that until just recently, chances are, we're going to have to push any renovation project back another year. When we met with Mrs. Carr, she, she did bring up a valid point that maybe we should be thinking about doing something in the interim. And we did discuss actually hanging, because we did find the, the resolution, actually hanging that, that wall of fame back up in the main gym where it was initially. And I believe that they, they did that, or are in the process of doing that?
Yeah. Eric, do you know if it's done yet?
Yeah, the two plaques with the photos, and the one that was like a commemorative plaque, they've been put back up in the gym.
And I spoke with Mrs. Carr yesterday, and, and then she called me back, because I did tell her that we were putting it up, and it would be up by Thursday, because this weekend is a, is a wrestling tournament. And so the students that are going to be wrestling will have an opportunity to see the, the plaques up, and they will be up. When she called me back, she did ask that, the concern right now for her was that her son had, had passed the memorial side of it. For, when she walked into the gym, the new gym that's there, there was an American flag. And, and her hope would be that, you know, maybe underneath that flag would be the memorial of her son. And I had shared that I would touch base with Ms. Devlin, and Ms. Devlin and I would meet with her again and talk through that. The, the other piece to that is that all of the trophies and, and all of the plaques, we want to, again, find an area that we can really have all of them available and displayed. And we talked about even doing like the 100 points for someone who reached, or, excuse me, 1,000 points people, from whatever school they were from, having it in Erie High. And that, we talked about possibly having a committee together to start to discuss all of that. Because there is, it's going to be a little while, but we want to get it and do it right. We don't want to just put it up. And if we do, I, I did ask June if she would be a part of that committee to help work through that. Because we, we did feel that we were moving so quickly. And, and I, we tried to explain that to her, and we hope that she understands that it was no slight of her son and of his duty for the, in the service for our country. We really do appreciate what her son had done for, for our country. And he is a role model to our students.
One thing that we also talked about that we can do in the interim, that we should be able to have done by the start of next school year, there's banners in East, Strong Vincent, and now Erie High, recognizing the past championship teams. The administration up there is talking about creating new banners with all, all four schools, actually, including Academy with those, so that, again, we're, we're not just recognizing one of the three student bodies that is represented in that building.
As I said, I knew there was a rationale, and I never, just never doubted that you were trying hard to be, work with her. And I also know she's very emotional, but yet I wanted to say that I understand why she is, and I support her for being that way. I think we all understand what we're talking about. But I do think this is a healthy thing for us to be talking about with what we did, throwing the schools together the way we did. And there's sensitivity with a lot of people to all of those other high schools. And there are a lot of people who think that what is at Vincent and East should remain there. And that, that, there's something to be said for that too. So whatever we do, I hope we do it carefully. But I haven't had the opportunity to talk with Brian B., John Dari, or anybody since these phone calls came. And I just wanted to bring it up. And I thought it was healthy for everyone to hear that there's concerns about these things, and to make sure, as we proceed, we do it the best we can. So I thank you. And please just know that I'm interested and hope to keep us posted. And thank you.
Maybe you could be on that committee, too.
Oh, I would.
As we, I really do think, and after talking with, with Dari and Brian, and John, and actually, Teresa is taking over some of the athletic pieces, that we look at having representatives of those four areas and of all those schools to say what would be, what would be in the best interest of all four schools to become the one school for, for our teams.
There's still a lot of sensitivity and whispers in the committee that when Academy was closed, a lot of the trophies and plaques disappeared. And I don't know if that's true, but I believe there's something to it. And that created a lot of, like, feeling like, let's not, let's be, let's learn from that, be protected going forward, not lose these things.
Okay, thank you. If anyone has anything else, we do need an executive session. So we will pause this meeting, and close our meeting in the next one. We'll take the five minute, and let's meet in room three.